I'd like to call the meeting to order, the Wilmington City Council. I'd like to welcome all those who are with us here tonight and all those who are watching us at home. Thank you for taking an interest in your government. At this time, I would like to introduce Captain Joe Michael James of the Wilmington Fire Department for their invocation. I ask that everyone remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance afterwards. Is Joe Michael here? Okay. Mr. Barnett, could you please give us the invocation?
Let us pray. God, who has promised to be a very present help in the time of trouble, we pause this evening, first of all, to say thank you for protecting our firefighters. Thank you, God, for being present when the car hit the gas pump and everything went up in the spokes. Thank you, God, that nobody was in the building and that those around didn't get hurt. Thank you, God, for your protection, not only doing stuff like that, but just everyday protection. And so now, we pray that as we've gathered here tonight, may the things that we do and say help make our world a better place to live. In his name we pray. Amen.
Amen. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we begin the meeting, I would also like to share our, um, the, what we saw today at New Center Drive was unbelievable. Our public safety personnel, especially our firefighters, the men and women of the Wilmington Fire Department, our police department, New Hanover County Fire Department that backed up our police department to take calls while we had our personnel out there putting out this horrendous fire, an explosion that took place. I just want to say, on behalf of the citizens of Wilmington and this city council, I want to thank them for their professionalism, for their heroism, and for the way they took care of that situation out there. It was unbelievable. I don't know if a lot of you know this, but there were several firefighters that were in the building when the explosion took place. Four of those firefighters were injured. One had to be taken to the Chapel Hill Burn Center. And our thoughts and prayers are with those individuals, those firefighters and their families tonight. But again, I just want to say, on behalf of the citizens, how proud I am of our departments and what they were able to do today. This is what these men and women train for. This is what they do, day in and day out, to protect each and every one of us. And we thank them for their public service to this community and for the lives that they saved and for the heroism of going into that building, knowing that that place may explode. And to see what happened in the aftermath is just, it's a tremendous honor to see those folks just coming together and working together to put, to really take care of the situation for our community. And I just, again, want to thank them for their outstanding service to our community. Thank you. God bless. So our first order of business is our consent agenda, items one through five. Are there any items that any council member would like to hear separately? If not, what are the wishes of this council? We have a motion to approve by Councilmember Andrews, second by Councilmember Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed, that item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is our public information segment. We have 30 minutes set aside for public information. We have nine speakers that have signed up to speak to us this evening. Each speaker will be allotted three minutes. The clerk will be keeping the allotment of the time. So our first speaker tonight will be Mr. Chase Daniel George, will be speaking to us about the city of Wilmington, TPM Chaplain Position. It's Mr. George here.
Hello. Hello, my name is Chase Daniel George. I'm a sixth-generation Wilmington native. I would like to bring forward the importance and timely need for establishing a city chaplain program. A dedicated role that serves not only our firefighters and police officers, but also supports our community during public events and times of crisis. The use of chaplains to improve functioning of organizations began centuries ago with the military and continues today with hospitals, hospice, fire departments, law enforcement agencies. Despite their increasing prevalence, the exact roles that chaplains fulfill vary from one organization to the other. Chaplains build a rapport through open-door policies, around-the-clock availability, services, counseling, hospital visitations, and work with religious leaders. They prove invaluable for strengthening our officer spirituality. One way they can support police departments is by maintaining awareness of the local crisis and citizens' needs. They should understand the chain of command and inform department leaders that they will not break confidentiality, even if requested to do so by an employee supervisor. Chaplains foster relationships between law enforcement officers and the public. Community-police relationships sometimes become impaired because individuals often have limited knowledge about the functions of the department, and officers may be skeptical towards the community. Chaplains can access community resources and organizations and facilitate partnerships between the departments and important individuals, such as religious leaders, community leaders, and local hospital administrators, to improve relationships and cooperation. Our first responders face some of the most difficult and traumatic moments anyone can endure, whether it's fatal car crashes, a house fire, violent calls, or a community disaster. While they are trained to act with courage and precision, the emotional toll can be profound and long-lasting. A city chaplain provides a confidential, compassionate presence, helping them cope with stress, trauma, and even personal struggles before these issues impact their health, families, and job performance. But the value of a chaplain goes beyond just first responders.
You want me to stop? I'll give you another minute. Let me wrap it up, please.
With a little healthy activism, the kind that gets involved to work with fellow believers towards real progress on common goals, such as sharing the good news, helping the needy, and building strong, caring disciples of Jesus Christ. You want me to close there? I'll keep. All right. Departments can describe the chaplain's specific duties in writing in a standard operation procedure, SOP. Leaders should ensure that all chaplains receive the necessary training and eccle, uh, eccla, uh, eccless, I must get that word. Ecclesiastical endorsement. At city events, memorials, celebrations, emergencies, a chaplain is often that steady voice of calm, unity, and hope, with the kind of faith that's expectations are anchored in a reality that are higher than circumstance. They reflect the values of compassion and care that we want to see in our city leadership. I urge this city council to consider establishing a city chaplain program, even if it's on a part-time basis initially.
Okay, sir. I'm sorry, because we got three minutes.
Oh.
Okay. Thank you.
You want me to end it?
Yeah, we have to, because I've given you over the time. Thank you.
All right. Well, this is a Bible verse. "The time has come. The kingdom of God is near. Repent and believe the good news." That's Mark, Chapter 1, Verse 15. Thank you for your time and for all you do to protect our community. God bless.
Thank you, sir. Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Linda Higgins, who will be speaking to us in respect to our citizens who are presently homeless.
Thank you for hearing me. I come to you because of the fact that, as you went through last, at your last meeting, the camping ordinance, as you pointed out, would only really affect the people who still are wealthy enough to have a car. In homelessness, that is the people who are newly homeless normally. Those are the people we can wrap our arms around and actually get rehoused as quickly as possible. To make it harder to do that is to decide to have more homelessness than we even have now. So I don't support your idea of a camping ordinance because of the fact that, first of all, we don't have, in this city, a 24-hour plan for somebody who is homeless. Somebody who is homeless, who wants to follow the rules, does not have places that they can be for 24 hours, seven days a week, and know that they are following the rules and they can be there. That is a basic thing that towns that have homeless populations, that need to respond to the homeless populations, that's the first thing you have to do before you can say they're in the wrong place. There has to be a right place. So the first thing I think we have to do is to work together to find the right places that we can then allow the, help publicize amongst the homeless populations as to where they can be 24/7. Where are they allowed to be? Because that's the first question. The second question is to hear them and what, the problems that the business people are saying they are having, some of those, there are very clear ways to fix, such as having more potajons around, is a way to fix. Part of the problem is to make it so that there are places to go to the bathroom. Because when, I mean, I know, when you're running a restaurant, you don't want to, at 10 o'clock in the night, ask, invite somebody in who is homeless to use your bathroom in the midst of your clientele. I get that. But then there have to be places they can. So we need to plan for where they can be before we think about where they can't be.
Okay. Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Linda Barnett, who will be speaking to us about unhoused in Wilmington. Ms. Barnett here? Next speaker is Ms. Robin Murrow, who will be speaking to us about community cohesion. Is Ms. Murrow here? Next speaker is Ms. Sonya Moldro, who will be speaking to us about homelessness. Ms. Moldro here? Next speaker is Ms. Cameron Bantonates, 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 of proposed ordinance. Cameron, welcome.
Good evening. Thank you for taking the time to listen to me. Homelessness is the consequence of two types of poverty coming together at the same time. Poverty of financial resources combined with poverty of relationships. Fifty percent are homeless for two weeks or less. Forty percent are homeless more than two weeks, but less than one year. The last 10% are who we consider chronically homeless. Of that last 10%, 50% of those individuals suffer from PTSD. 53% of those individuals suffer from traumatic brain injury. 18% suffer from schizophrenia. 19% suffer from bipolar disorder. 20% suffer from an intellectual disability. And 92% suffer from personality disorder. During the last meeting, we saw some videos of individuals who fit the stereotype of the chronically homeless. I also heard the term "catcalling" being used. If you knew that there was a 53% chance that that individual has a traumatic brain injury and disinhibition, which is a result of a TBI, they tend to say wildly inappropriate things, literally because of a blow to the head. And that filter that most people have, which says, "Hey, this is socially inappropriate," does not exist because of that blow to the head. So I believe if we educate ourselves, if we stop looking at a one-size-fits-all, if we take a deeper look into what's causing homelessness, that we will be able to find solutions, because we can solve homelessness. And some of these, some of these immediate solutions could look like, let's invite some of our neighbors who are experiencing homelessness to the table, and let's have conversations with them. At the same time, let's have some of our business owners who are experiencing issues that we have heard to sit at the same table. Let's build community and form relationships, and let's figure out a way that we can all be better neighbors. Because what could come of that is, jobs could be created. Some of the business owners may decide that they would like to hire some of the homeless individuals to help keep their businesses clean during the off-hours on the outside. We might find out that we generally have a lot more in common than we may see and may understand. There are trainings, such as Ryan Dowd's homelessness trainings, that are 80% successful in preventing situations from escalating. And what this would do is, it would relieve some of the burdens that our first responders are experiencing when we call the police too often, over something that, if we were educated, we may be able to prevent from escalating. There are community art spaces. May I request a little more time?
Just a little bit more time.
Thank you. There are community art spaces where maybe we can invite our chronically homeless and individuals that are experiencing homelessness for less than a year and our business owners to sit at the same table, create art together, and start conversations. And I think that we have plenty of solutions that we, as a community, can join together to put into action so that everybody is happy.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker, next speaker is Ms. Terri Hudson-Mann, who will be speaking to us about ongoing issues in downtown Wilmington. Is Ms. Mann here?
Thank you. Good evening, and thank you for allowing me to speak. I am also a Wilmington, native Wilmingtonan, and for several generations. I am ashamed of and exhausted with what is happening in Wilmington. I totally agree with Ms. Andrews. I totally disagree with Mr. Waddell. I think to criminalize homelessness is going so far backwards. What are we going to do with them? We have nowhere to house them, in or out of jail. I've been on this bandwagon for many years. Building in this town is out of control, and yet, with all the building, there's nowhere to live, not for folks who make minimum wage or even $20 an hour. Folks who move here from other states with higher wages make almost double what I make in Social Security. Their pensions are also higher. They can afford the housing. Those who have lived here their whole lives cannot. The housing prices go up, then the taxes and insurance go up, and then we get angry with the homeless. No more. Create affordable housing and a good mental health system. Support the locals. There used to be at least eight low-income housing projects in Wilmington. Where are they now? I propose that we take some of these large, empty buildings and do whatever we need to do to obtain them, and create a space where unhoused people can have a safe place to sleep, shower, and eat. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Ms. Soraya Muntzinger, who will be speaking to us about community solutions addressing the unhoused.
Good evening. It's nice to be here again after many years. There are two motivations why people care about homelessness and affordability. One is that they have a heart for folks in need. Two is that they care about public safety and orderliness. Hopefully, all of us are in agreement and motivated by both these things. Now, Councilman Waddell, there's a bit of a spotlight on you right now for bringing forth this ordinance, and I have to say, the only personal experience I have with you, you are lovely. You approached me with humility, integrity, respect, like a leader. So I'm really hoping you hear me return good faith in applauding you for trying to address the issue of homelessness and affordability, but to say that, I'm sorry, I really just don't think this ordinance is going to help do what you're intending to do. I live downtown, and between my husband, my brother-in-law, my mother-in-law, we own three businesses downtown. We're in and around downtown all the time. So I'm very much impacted by if this ordinance is actually effective and helps people get the resources they need to get off the streets, or if it accidentally makes things worse and puts more of a strain on our community resources. Because I'm interested, I reached out to the Good Shepherd Center and took a tour, and I found out it's the only emergency shelter in the Tri-County area. It's a full 45-minute walk from the downtown area to get to Good Shepherd, and they have 119 beds, which are continually filled, and they have a 75% or 75-person waiting list for each of those beds. So I also talked to Good Shepherd about the population they serve, and I'm sorry to say that the only changes this ordinance proposes from the other ordinances that are already on the books of the city, unfortunately, it's not going to help. I think it'll accidentally make things worse. The people it'll impact will be the single mom trying to escape domestic violence issues, sleeping in her car in a surface parking lot. The people at the Good Shepherd, they're really doing angels' work. They're really effective at getting people housed. To get from the shelter into permanent housing is about a 90-day turnaround. The problem is, there's a huge backlog. Because each of you do have a heart for this community and for this issue, I'd encourage you to continue to look to solve this problem. But I'd invite every single councilperson to take another tour of Good Shepherd and hopefully go beyond that. You spoke with the police chief and the city attorney at the last council meeting, which is wonderful, but wouldn't it be a good idea to also reach out to the other folks who are dealing with this issue on a daily basis, and this is their entire focus? Faith groups, the WDI folks, social workers, probably other people that the Good Shepherd folks could recommend? And my hope is really that, when you see an issue in our community, you do do the thing to get something done. But could I have just another minute? But that you don't just rush to do something, that you really make sure what you do has a really positive lasting impact in our community. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Laura Taylor, be talking about criminalizing homelessness. Ms. Taylor?
Thank you for having me. I come to you today to ask what you would do if you or someone you care about falls on hard times and is forced to live in their car or on the street. It might sound ludicrous to you, but believe me, it could easily happen to any of us. I came close once myself, before making a six-figure salary at one time, for any other number of reasons: financial ruin due to medical debt, job loss, or a devastating divorce, unable to afford outlandish rents even while working, or an out-of-control mental health or addiction crisis. And let's not pretend that only the poor have mental health or addiction issues. However, homelessness is not a crime. There are many cities in this world where the homeless are treated with the dignity and respect that any human being should get, and are provided decent shelter and opportunities to improve their lives. I find it amazing that this country has sunk to the level that we are even having this conversation, leaning to the example of the administration up the road, attempting to lock homeless people up for the crime of having no money. There are options and would take little initiative to make them work. Perhaps housing our homeless citizens should have been placed above the new trophy library center downtown. Perhaps an earlier suggestion to build housing pods for them should have brought more than a nod and then inaction. Perhaps you should stop thinking about disappearing people who have as much human value, if not monetary value, as all of us. Perhaps you should, as I do, carry around water bottles and granola bars and get out of your car and hand these out when you see someone, excuse me, this really obscures me, who appears homeless. It might be a little intimidating at first, but when you approach these people one-on-one, they suddenly seem more like you. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. So we had three speakers that did not show up, so we have three speakers that did sign up right there at the door, so we'll go fill out those spots right now. Bridget Tarrant will be speaking to us for ordinance for overnight camping.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, and council members. I'm just going to say something quickly about this ordinance, because everybody before me has already spoken some of the thoughts that I would like to share. So what, I watched the city council meeting, I was out of town, but I watched the city council meeting when you guys discussed this, and all the ordinances we already have seem to cover this, except for the surface street parking. So I'm not sure why we need this new ordinance. And then the other thing about this ordinance is it's fairly vague. So occupying city streets between 10:00 PM and 7:00 AM, what does that mean? Like, if I'm out walking my dog, if I'm, you know, late getting home because I went out to eat or something, does that mean I can't walk on my streets because I live downtown? So just consider that, that it opens that up for a lot of interpretation and the people that are monitoring the streets and that are monitoring this ordinance. They may choose to select some people, oh, that person's okay, that person's not. So if you could just keep that in mind. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Next speaker is Angie Omer, who will be speaking to us about homelessness also.
Check. How's it going, guys?
Good.
Good, good. I would like to speak out against Luke Waddell's ordinance that would make camping on public property illegal. I would like to challenge all of you to come up with proactive solutions, not reactive How do we keep folks in their homes, in their apartments? This is what we need to look at. Taking away their tents during sleeping hours, I'll tell you for one thing, we want them to sleep. We want them to go to bed. We want them to be where they're supposed to be and not, like you said, just walking around and just walking around. So that's, I agree with what she was saying, 10:00 PM to 7:00 AM, that's kind of ridiculous. So in the ordinance even, it says something about exceptions for emergency sheltering. Now, what does that look like if we're already in a housing crisis? Please tell me what the emergency sheltering would look like? Because as far, a lot of people have said before, that means it looks like there should be a designated place, right, for all of these folks to go. So how about we work on that first and see how we can, in this housing crisis, make emergency sheltering? We don't have enough shelters, as again, people before me have said, for our men. There are some, there are a good amount for women, and they are full, they're full. But there are not enough for men, and yet that includes our veterans. I know a gentleman right now, Purple Heart recipient, sleeping in a tent, and you mean to tell me you want to take his tent away? Just be, he is on the verge of getting what he needs from the I know a gentleman right now, Purple Heart recipient, sleeping in a tent, and you mean to tell me you want to take his tent away? Just be, he is on the verge of getting what he needs from disability, but it has not come through yet. And these are the situations that we have to think of. There has been sociological studies that show that when the chronically homeless get housing, 80% of those housed improve their living situations. That means health, that means relationships, like what Ms. Cameron said, that means a lot. And when I did, when I said get housing, I mean get. I mean, it is given to them. Because you can't stop and focus on how to be a more productive person in society if you have to worry about where you're going to sleep. That is just a hold card, the hold, the cold, hard truth of it all. If you want better citizens from your homeless community, the trick is to find places for them to go that are safe, that have amenities like Portage Johns, and et cetera. We are, we, and I will say we, because I am staying at 811 Martin Street, which is the Good Shepherd, we are not throwaways. Thank you.
Thank you. Last speaker this evening is Ms. Judy Justice, about homelessness. Ms. Justice, here.
By the way, thank you for doing this. Now, I've been listening to your public statements about the homeless population here in Wilmington the last couple of weeks. There appears to be two camps arguing about how to best solve the downtown homeless problem that is affecting the downtown business district. One camp wants to further criminalize those unfortunate enough to be homeless, and the other wants to offer solutions that will provide some form of safe housing for those who are currently unsheltered. The truth is, is that our city's homeless problem is a lot bigger than what goes on It is a year-round issue that seems to usually be ignored by those who have the power to help those people who are living in the streets, parking lots and woods in our community. Not until some of those in power were inspired to action by the downtown business community who are concerned about profit loss from people sleeping in their doorways, using their bathroom, or begging in the streets. Did some of you seated at the dais here even notice the issue? There are already laws in place to deal with these concerns, but that means that those business owners and law enforcement need to work together and enforce those laws. Obviously, that is not currently taking place. Now, I am familiar with those people who are homeless because my daughter was one of them for many years. By her own choice, she was diagnosed as schizoaffective, which means she had bipolar disease and schizophrenia at the same time, along with ADHD, PTSD, and several other mental illnesses. It was hereditary and most are. Her father was bipolar, and both of her parents, my parents, suffered from a variety of mental illnesses also. She began to display symptoms when she hit puberty. She was 12 years old when she started hearing voices. Over the next 30 years, she was in and out of treatment in hospitals as her illness progressed. She also inherited intelligence, many talents, charm and beauty, none of which could save her from the horrible results of suffering from such extreme mental illness. She died last year as a result of her mental illness. Our mental health system, like most of our mental health, mental, excuse me, our healthcare system, is broken. It does not offer the help that our mentally ill need to be safe and successful in our society. According to a 2019 study by HUD, 32, I mean, 36% of the homeless are mentally ill. An even more recent and comprehensive analysis of 85 studies worldwide, but focusing mainly on the U.S., Canada and Germany, 67% of the homeless population suffer from mental illness. Understand this: chronic mental illness is a disease of the brain, not a character defect. It also touches everyone in this room in one form or another. To try and criminalize it out of existence is ridiculous. It is unrealistic and cruel towards those who are homeless. The ones who are experiencing homelessness and who are not mentally ill are often people who have been forced to be in that position, could I have to continue just for a minute longer? In that position for their own, such as job loss, aging out of the foster system, loss of homes from such things as fires, women and youth leaving abusive homes, veterans which you have heard about, who are not being supported properly by our veteran services. I watched my daughter struggle and suffer, along with her fellow homeless friends. She had a lot of support from her family, but most of them don't. We, as a society, need to be as supportive of our fellow community members. We need to be creating systems to support those suffering, not making their lives worse. And it's up to you, Wilmington leaders, to decide to help those vulnerable populations, not make their lives even worse. Thank you very much, and I hope you listen to every speaker.
Thank you, ma'am. This concludes our public information segment. Our next item of business is our public hearings. Item PH1 is an ordinance directing the housing inspector to vacate, close and repair or demolish dwelling at 2606 Robinson Street as unfit for human habitation pursuant to Article 5, Chapter 16 of the City Code and directing that a notice be placed there on prohibiting its use or occupancy. At this time, I'd like to recognize our city manager, Ms. Becky Hall. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. And I'd like to introduce Brian Renner, our chief code enforcement officer, who will go over this presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, council. Tonight, we're going to talk about 2606, I say Robeson, but I'm sure I'm saying it wrong. Robinson Street?
Say it either which way you want it.
Okay. So this is a 10,000-square-foot vacant house. The owners, this is an heirs' property. We've been in contact with the heirs, just for reference. This house was damaged by fire back in about 2019, shortly after the owner passed away. So we started this case back in August of 2023. It was from an officer's observation. As I said, it's a vacant fire-damaged structure. We took it to administrative hearing in October 2024. The heirs were in attendance at that hearing, and then that order expired in April of 2025. We have had conversations with the heirs. It took us a little while for them to respond to us after that hearing, but the most recent conversation we had is that they intend to sell the property. So that's kind of where we're at with this. The 2024 tax value was $76,000 for that building. Just for reference, the 2025 tax value is now $10,400. RSMA's cost to repair was, at that time, was $41,000, which is 54%, which is dilapidated by the city's minimum housing code. So this would be a repair or demolish ordinance. Now, these are sections of the minimum housing code outlining the findings of fact. So we'll do some photos. These photos were taken July 30th. Nothing substantial has changed on the property since. We do have a collapse in the front portion of the roof. We can see all the windows are missing. The back half of the roof is actually completely gone on side of the house. The family had at one point made efforts to strip the house out from the fire damage, and then there were some issues with insurance and a lot of things that happened with the estate. So here we can see that. There is a shed in the back as well that's falling down. And this is the inside. A lot of combustible materials inside as well. So where we're at with this is we're looking at 90 days for repair or demolish within this ordinance. As I said, we have been in contact with them. I'm not sure if anybody is here this evening. Some of them are out of state and some of them are local, but I'm here if there's any questions about this case.
Any questions for staff? Yes, sir.
When was the last time you talked with someone in the family?
It was, I believe, late last week.
Okay.
They had been under contract for sale, but that fell through. So that's, that's kind of the conversation that we had with them.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, Ms. Spears?
Mayor Pro Tem Barnett kind of asked my question. I know this family. I know Rhonda, and I spoke with her maybe two weeks ago, and she said that she had sold the home, and you're saying that it fell through?
Yeah, it fell through. They were, they were working with the wholesaler and the end buyer backed out.
Gotcha. And we prefer to call it Robeson Street.
Robeson?
Yeah.
That's what I said, so I wanted to make sure. Thank you.
Yeah, don't listen to the mayor. We call it Robeson Street.
Ms. Rambar?
There's not any utilities connected to this house, is there?
No.
Good, thank you.
Okay. Anybody else? Okay. Thank you, Brian. At this time, if the owner or the, I would like to recognize the property owner, if the property owner is here. Seeing none, I'm going to open up the public hearing and ask if anybody in the public wishes to speak on item PH1. Parker, have we received any additional commentary about this property? Okay. Are there any further questions from council in respect to the property? Okay. I'm going to close the public hearing and ask for the wishes of council. I see that we have a motion by Councilmember Spears, second by Mayor Pro Tem Barnett. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Is there a motion to waive second reading? Motion made by Councilmember Joyner, second by Councilmember Spears. Discussion, all in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously on first as well as second reading. That brings us to our next item of business, which are our resolutions. Item R1 is a resolution authorizing the city manager to deliver a notice of intent to establish a quiet zone with the Federal Railroad Administration pursuant to 49 CFR Part 222. And this time, I'd like to recognize the city manager, Ms. Becky Hall. Ms. Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the board, and economic develop, direct, excuse me, Economic Development Director Aubrey Parsley will be talking about this proposal and has a brief presentation.
Good evening, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Mayor, I think this was maybe the very first question you asked me when I took a job here with the city of Wilmington. What is a quiet zone? How can we get one? And how long will it take? And I think another council member may have been one of the first meetings I had with as well. So this is something that has been on the minds of staff and myself and many others here from the Traffic Department to Dave Mayes and Streets and Sidewalks. And we've really just been evaluating our prospects for this, and now is, we believe, the right time to bring this item forward to council for consideration. First, I'd like to start just by managing expectations, and I'll have a slide on the end to recap this, but this resolution tonight would merely initiate the process, begin the process, to try and establish a quiet zone across the city of Wilmington. And I'll show a map here of where it would apply. It would not, it does not guarantee one. You have to do a multi-agency, multi-step process to make this happen. So this would be the very first step, and with council's approval tonight, we would begin that process. So first, let me just speak a bit about what a quiet zone is. A quiet zone comes from a federally regulated program from the FRA. It's been around for about 20 years now, since 2005. There's over 1,000 of them across the country, and they apply to over 5,500 crossings. What they do is they, once installed or once established, they do not require trains, so the locomotive engineer, to routinely blow their horn when they cross a public at-grade crossing. So right now, federal law requires that when a train approaches a public at-grade crossing, they have to sound their horn. Reason being, it is by far the best way to let everybody know the train is coming, get out of the way. It is a safety technology at the end of the day, but one that certainly interrupts quality of life for many, many folks across the country who live near the railroad tracks. So the feds established this program to try and curb that quality of life issue with safety and find a happy median in between. So a little bit more background and context that's specific to the city of Wilmington. Really, this, this process, or the potential to establish this quiet zone, took shape when city council adopted in 2017 a rail division study from NC DOT that looked at traffic separation across the railroad corridor in Wilmington. About two and a half years later, the rail division had applied for a FRA grant, which, as a part of that grant submission, included many, many expensive grade-crossing safety improvements throughout the city. All those improvements came from the study from 2017, which I think that study may have began in 2013. So this has been a long time in the making. And then just recently, in June of this year, council authorized the city manager to enter into a construction agreement with NC DOT and CSX to implement these grade-crossing improvements throughout the city. More on that here in a moment. So this is the map from the original study, and it is still applicable today. All the yellow dots that you see along the rail corridor here are public at-grade crossings, and they were studied by rail division and evaluated for safety. And safety improvements, unique and sometimes specific to each of these crossings, was proposed and incorporated eventually in NC DOT Project P5740, which not only include, includes crossing improvements and closures, but also improves the overall rail corridor as well. For what we're asking council to consider tonight, I have added two crossings that we would like to propose for this notice of intent. That would be the crossing at Third Street and the crossing at South Front Street to allow for the full corridor all the way up to the port to be established as part of the quiet zone. A little bit going into the technical aspects of a quiet zone, and the first thing I want to point out is that to have a quiet zone in a section of rail corridor, at a minimum, you need each of your public highway rail crossings to have flashing lights, gates, signals. This tends to be the most onerous part of establishing a quiet zone for most municipalities and local jurisdictions. This equipment is expensive, and it usually falls in the local jurisdiction to provide it and enhance the rail corridor, to provide these safety improvements, to get this quiet zone established. Once you have that as a baseline, then there is a calculator that the federal regulator uses to figure out if your rail corridor will be as safe or safer than it would be with these improvements when you get, when you get rid of the horns. So once you get rid of the horns, the way the regulators view it is the corridor becomes less safe because less folks know the train's coming through. They can't hear from as far away. So they want to know that you have the safety improvements in place to mitigate all that risk and then some. And there's two types of quiet zones you can qualify for. If you meet one criteria, which is making it safer than it was, or safer than it was considering the horns go away, then you qualify for a quiet zone in perpetuity. If you get your index, your risk index, down below the national average, then you can become a quiet zone as well, but they're going to look at your corridor every year. And if you fall above that national average, you lose your quiet zone eligibility. So more on that here in just a moment. So as I, as I mentioned, funding tends to be by far the major limiting factor for establishing a quiet zone, but we are fortunate here in Wilmington to have NC DOT, rail division, CSX, and the federal government, the FRA, investing heavily, over $15 million in these, in safety improvements across the corridor. So on that map that I showed you, every single one of those crossings will have the necessary baseline signaling equipment to seal that corridor effectively and keep traffic from interacting with that, the rail operations there. So with that funding in place from the state and the feds, we have a significant leg up financially to be able to apply for this without having to invest what is obviously significant funding to, to take advantage of this program. So we're leveraging some of our in-house staff time and expertise, again, state and federal dollars, to initiate the process for this program. A few more notes, just to, again, manage expectations, is this is a process, it will take time, estimate about one to three years from notice of intent to having a quiet zone established. I think most of that time will be when the construction improvements actually show up. So when rail division and CSX make the installations, I think the, potentially, the procedural administration won't take as long as that. It'll need to wait on the physical improvements to show up. As I mentioned at the beginning of the presentation, the resolution tonight just allows us to begin the process, and it'll take considerable time after that, so expect some future items on this. I will say too that depending on how the math works out, we may come back to city council in form of a CIP request to make some other street improvements, what are called supplemental safety measures, to boost our numbers, to potentially get us into that quiet zone in perpetuity, should council deem that appropriate use of capital at the time. So we think that based on initial analysis, that we're going to meet that criteria, one of those two thresholds, but I just want to set the expectation that there might be some extra credit we can earn and be eligible for that perpetuity. But we're not talking about major signal improvements. We're probably talking about things like raised median curbs to keep people from trying to go around the gates. There's, it's not just going to be the city involved with this. CSX, NC DOT, the Ports Railroad Operator, WTRY, and WMPO will also be involved. And I do want to mention that the quiet zone applies to horns. Locomotives still ring bells as they go by, so folks would still hear the bells as the trains come. train's coming through, but obviously the decibel levels on those aren't as impactful as the horns. So that concludes my presentation, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Mr. Rambard?
On the second type of quiet zone, where you have annual inspection, if there's a, I kinda liken it to a health inspection at a restaurant, if you have, if you fall below a certain degree, you have an opportunity to fix it, to come back out, inspect it, and you go back to having your A grade. Is that similar? Do we have to start over from scratch? Or can that one, can that one problem be solved and then you're back in business?
My understanding is the latter.
Okay.
That you can solve for that problem if it arises with an additional supplemental safety measure somewhere on the corridor to bring that, let's say the traffic increases significantly and your exposure number gets bigger, you can mitigate that with future improvements.
One other question, does the entire system have to be complete before you can start the quiet zone, or can it progress down the line?
I believe the whole corridor has to be ready to go to be eligible.
Thank you.
Mr. Joyner?
I'm curious, from a practical standpoint, how does the, if you know this, how does the train operator know that they're in a quiet zone? Because if it's their standard practice to blow their horn, can you go over that again for us?
So that sign there is, there will be, there'll be postings along the railroad right-of-way that allows the locomotive engineer to know that they are in a quiet zone. So there tends to be these little, there's whistle posts as well that you'll see that reminds the engineer where to blow the horn. So the railroad would, if established, make changes to some of that signage as well. But at the end of the day, the locomotive engineer can still blow the horn if they think something is unsafe, they see somebody in the right-of-way, and they want to alert them to get out of the way, they can still very much blow the horn. So this is not a prohibition against it, but it's just, you don't have to routinely do it.
Okay, thank you.
Aubrey, just out of curiosity, how fast does the train move out of the city? Because I've had several citizens that have talked to us or called us about, they'd like to see the speeds a little bit faster, to get the train out faster. What are the speeds? And will this allow the train to move faster through the city? I know it's several miles to get through to get to the Davis yard.
So these, there's, you'll notice here is P-5740, B and C. I left off A. A is the physical rail corridor, the rail infrastructure improvement, so they're replacing ties and rail, all to increase the track speed across the corridor through town. Right now, it's regulated, I believe, at 10 miles an hour, and the speed post improvements, which are on their way here, would bring that up to 25.
Okay, move, double.
Double.
Yeah. I guess there's people that are sitting there waiting for the train to go by, would like to see them go by faster.
Yes, sir.
Okay, any other questions? It's good news. I know this is something that we've been talking about for quite some time in this community, because you can hear the train all over the town, so it's a good move. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good work. We have a motion to approve by council member Waddell, second by council member Rambard. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. That brings us to our next item of business, which is reports. RP1 is a report of council's appointments committee for boards, commissions, and committees. And at this time, I'd like to recognize council member Charlie Rambard, who is the chairman of that.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The appointments committee met on August the 4th here in these chambers. Members present were myself, council member Luke Waddell, and council member Salette Andrews. The staff attending was our Penny Spicer-Sidberry, our city clerk, Meredith Everhart, our city attorney. The first thing I put up for your consideration is to the Cape York Public Utility Authority, reappointing Dean Hackney Jr. with a term to expire 6/30/28. Second is a civil service commission, reappointing Dr. Carl Rust, representing the Medical Society, with a term to expire 4/15/28. Number three item is downtown park and advisory committee. Reappoint Jane Patterson from the residence of Old Wilmington, term to expire 8/17/28. Reappoint McKay Siegel at-large, term expiring 8/20/28. Reappoint Christina Haley, the WDI rep, with a term to expire 8/20/28. And reappoint Jeff Walton at-large with a term to expire 8/20/28. And reappoint Justin Smith with the Downtown Business Alliance with a term to expire 9/21/28. Number four item was a firefighters relief fund board of trustees. Appoint Andrew Zack, fire department representative, with, there is no term expiration on that. And also, reappoint, or appoint Chris Stendersen as a fire department rep with no term expiration. Number five item is municipal services district advisory committee. We have several here with the municipal services district, we're gonna keep advertising that, we don't have a person to appoint tonight. And representing the Downtown Business Alliance, reappoint Ms. Terry Espy with a term to expire 7/1/28. Reappoint Ray Worrell from the restaurant industry with a term to expire 7/1/28. Remove James McGee, representing professional services. Reappoint Tom Davis with WD Wilmington Downtown, Inc., with a term to expire 7/1/28. Reappoint Ann Coffey, an MSD resident, who lives in the MSD, with a term to expire 7/1/28. And reappoint Elizabeth Wright at-large with a term to expire 7/1/28. Had a long meeting that day. Item number six is the Wilmington-New Hanover County Port and Wardway and Beach Commission. Appoint Wayne Richardson, the International Longshoreman Association representative, with a term to expire 2/28/28. And number seven item is the Sister City Commission. Appoint Valerie Robertson at-large with a term to expire 9/1/26. Reappoint Catherine Schultz at-large with a term to expire 8/16/28. Appoint Emily Collin at-large with a term to expire 9/1/26. And the final item for your consideration is the zoning board of adjustment. Appoint Troy Deimers as a regular member. He moves up from alternate classification to a regular board member. And appoint Jim Downey, alternate four. All other alternate positions will move up. Elaine Norman will move to alternate number one. Bill Day to alternate number two. Greg Thompson will move to alternate number three, and we're advertising for another alternate to become alternate number four. With that, I present these to council for your consideration.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Motion made by council member Waddell, second by council member Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. At this time, I'd like to waive the rules for us to consider a resolution. Does I have a motion to waive the rules? Motion made by council member Waddell, second by council member Andrews. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Item passes unanimously. The city of Wilmington, in the last several months, has gone through a pretty rigorous and exhaustive process in looking for a new police chief. We haven't gone outside of the city since Chief Evangelist was first brought here in 2004. Obviously, Chief Williams was promoted from within, so the council made a decision to move out and take a look around the country to see what's out there that we were interested in looking at. And we contracted out with a great firm called Perf that had also done the evaluation and the search for, when Chief Evangelist was brought here in 2004, and came up with some very good candidates that came from across the nation. Big cities, mid-sized cities, it was an exhaustive search. And council had worked diligently, did their homework, asked a lot of good questions, a lot of tough questions, and we settled on one individual who is here with us this evening. And I'm gonna read the resolution, and he's here with his wife, and I'm gonna introduce him in just a second. But this is introduced by the city council, a resolution to appoint Ryan M. Zudema as chief of police. Legislative intent and purpose, whereas pursuant to Article 11, Section 11.4 of the city charter, city council is vested with the authority to appoint the chief of police. And whereas after a thorough recruitment and selection process, the city council has determined that Ryan M. Zudema possesses the qualification and experience necessary to effectively serve as chief of police to lead the Wilmington Police Department with integrity and commitment to this community. Therefore be it resolved that Ryan M. Zudema is hereby appointed to the position of chief of police for the city of Wilmington. That pursuant to Chapter 9, Article 1, Section 9-1 of the city charter, the chief of police shall be under the immediate supervision of the city manager and shall be the chief executive officer of the Wilmington Police Department. That the effective date of this appointment shall be September 22, 2025. So I will ask for an approval of this resolution. Council member Waddell has made the motion, second by council member Joyner. Any further discussion? All in favor of that motion, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That item passes unanimously. Chief Zudema, would you like to come up and say a few words and introduce yourself to this great community?
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Pro Tem, members of council. Truly an honor to be in front of you. I want to thank you for your trust and your confidence through this process in naming me your next chief of police. I certainly look forward to working with, I know several in here tonight, the men and women of the Wilmington Police Department. I've heard nothing but great things about all of them, and I know they're a great bunch of folks. I look forward to working alongside them as well. I look forward to working with city staff and all of you. You know, I don't lead by just running one department, as I told all of you, it takes all of us working together as city leaders in different departments to make this city successful. Look forward to meeting this great community. I had an opportunity to travel here several times and look around, and look forward to meeting everyone here and building those strong and lasting partnerships with them as well. I've had an opportunity, had some great conversations with our city manager, Ms. Hawke. I think we've already had some great discussions on different topics. Look forward to working under your leadership as well, thank you. And had a few brief moments in the back to talk to Chief Evangelist, and I know he brings a wealth of knowledge about both this community and this department, and I'm gonna spend a lot of time with him until he gets sick of me talking to him, probably. Learn as much as I can from him. I just want to close by saying certainly thankful, as you mentioned, for our brothers and the fire department. It could have been a lot worse today. My thoughts and prayers are with all of them, and I hope they recover quickly for those that were injured. Again, just to thank you for your trust. I can't wait to get started here in Wilmington.
Well, thank you. I also want to recognize your wife, there's also, that has taken and made the trip. Jenna, come on up, so we can see you. And your brother's here too, who I didn't know was the city manager of Morrisville, but he runs in the family, so.
Behind even a decent man is a much better woman, so I definitely married up without a question, and grateful for her support. She's been by my side. The toughest job in America is not being a police officer, it's being a spouse or family member of one, and she stood by my side for almost 29 years, so I appreciate her. She's been the rock behind me, so, thank you, sir.
Thank you, and welcome to Wilmington. Thank you. Well, we've come to the end of the meeting, but this is a bittersweet moment, because this is the last meeting that the city of Wilmington City Council will do here in this historic hall. We're gonna be moving to our new location, which is at 929 North Front, and our next meeting will take place there. But this city hall, Thalian Hall, this dual-purpose building, has been the center of the community's culture and political life since it first opened in 1858. And in 1853, the city council appointed a committee to see for a suitable site for building a new town hall. By 1854, permission had been given by the state legislature for the city to issue bonds in the amount of $50,000. I think we got a good day's work out of this building, because I think we got our money's worth from this beautiful historic building. Construction began in 1855, and it opened in 1858, and has been the seat of local government since then. In December of 1860, in the eve of the Civil War, a gentleman who y'all may know and y'all may not know, by the name of Edward Everett, was one of the most famous orators of his time, spoke in this very room. For those of you who do not know who Mr. Everett was, he was the person who shared the stage with Abraham Lincoln at the battlefield where Lincoln gave the Gettysburg Address. For those of you who are historic buffs, Everett spoke for two hours. Lincoln spoke for two minutes. And guess what? It's the greatest speech in American history, the Gettysburg Address. Others that have spoken or performed here have been Frederick Douglass, Oscar Wilde, Buffalo Bill Cody, President William Taft, Maya Angelou, Booker T. Washington. This very room here was also the Wilmington Public Library, established by the North Carolina Serosis Club. This was the first library, and just like any other library, it expanded, the community grew, and so they had to move. And so we're moving now too. So there was a lot, there's a lot of history made in this room, a lot of history made in this building. The city chambers have been here since 1990, and it is a testament to the men and women and the people that have kept this building performing the way it has for many years. I've always said that we've got theater in the back, and we've got theater in the front. And sometimes the theater in the front is better than the theater in the back. But it has been, it has been an honor to serve here. I think all of us will say this is a historic, beautiful building, and one that's gonna carry on in a new way, because this space here will be now occupied completely by Thalian Hall. And so we've got some exciting new plans, and we have our executive director of Thalian Hall for Performing Art, Mr. Shane Fernando, who's gonna be sharing some things with this community that may, some may people have not seen, but I think it's some exciting things that are gonna be happening here in Thalian Hall and the old city chambers. Shane?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, council, for having me here tonight. It is an honor to manage this national treasure on behalf of our citizens of Wilmington, and thank you for the faith that you have in THCPA, our board, and our leadership here over 60-plus years. Tonight, we turn the final page of a chapter, the sunset of an era, and as a community, begin writing the next chapter for this building. Over 166 years ago, the city of Wilmington celebrated this beloved structure as it came to life, as our opera house, as our library, our armory, and as our seat of government. And this room in particular has a very special story, and actually, the presence of our city council, as our mayor said, with it being in this room, is a more recent change in the scope of history. Many folks don't know, but in 1858, this room was a performance space, and it had a small stage, it sat about a third of what the main stage of Thalian Hall accommodated. We sadly don't have images of the room as a formal hall, but in this photo from the 1920s, you can see the original stage in the center, and there are bookcases up on the stage and a circulation desk in front of it. You could also see one of the gas chandeliers that once hung in this room. And many theater, dance, musical, cultural, and lecture events occurred here. Many of the performers and lectures, which the mayor spoke about, including Frederick Douglass in 1872. In the 1890s, this room became a roller skating rink during the late 19th century roller skating craze. And then in 1906, the public library moved upstairs from its cramped quarters on the first floor, where the love of books was nurtured here until 1956. This room then was cut up into smaller city office spaces for the next 30 years, until the 1980s, when a large overhaul of the complex of city hall and the theater that was led by the esteemed late Tony Rivenbarck. You'll see in this image Tony and Susan Dankel, former assistant city manager, and the famed artist Claude Howell in this room during the demolition and preparation for construction. The council chambers moved upstairs from the first floor in 1990 and served us well in this space for the last 35 years. And this historic structure has borne witness to our story as a city, our people's stories over the last 166 years, from pre to post-Civil War, Reconstruction, the 1898 coup... over the last 166 years, from pre to post-Civil War, Reconstruction, the 1898 coup, presidential visits, the Depression, multiple pandemics, two world wars, and our city going from boom to bust to boom again. Looking forward, we plan to capture stories of our city through the lens of this structure with exhibits that will be installed in this building, as well as the establishment of a formal archives and research library. And I'd like to share a brief video of the transformation of the entire Thalian Hall complex and what is in store for us. So Dylan.
Known as the crown jewel of the Carolina coast, Thalian Hall Center for the Performing Arts is both an architectural treasure and one of the most utilized historic theaters in America. Last year, Thalian Hall hosted over 700 events, including world-class touring artists and over 40 regional theater, music, dance, and film organizations that call Thalian Hall home. With our region's continued growth and increasing demand for space and programming, we can't contain ourselves. Thalian Hall is thrilled to announce a groundbreaking transformation that will double our square footage and enhance Wilmington's cultural landscape. We are growing from within. With City Hall's recent consolidation to the Skyline Center, we are presented with an incredible opportunity to devote our entire building to the arts, double our capacity, and be ready for the future. Our plans include the Hippodrome, a new 300-seat venue for performance, immersive, and new media; the Wildcat Club; studio and rehearsal spaces; recording studio; technical upgrades to each theater; new seating; restored decorative painting; Archives Vault and Library; education center for workforce training and entrepreneurship; Scenic Lab; increased support for Pied Piper Theater; expansion of guest amenities; lobby redesign; accessibility features; larger restrooms; coffee shop; martini bar; not to mention transforming our outdoor portico into a concert and film venue; redesigning our Chestnut Street facade; and reestablishing the historic Third Street entrance. When Thalian Hall was built in 1858, it was arguably the most advanced theater in the American South. We look forward to holding that honor again and continuing to delight and transport audiences of all ages. You don't have to go anywhere else. The future happens here.
So that's a little sneak peek of what's to come, and we anticipate, last year had over 100,000 guests come through. We look at this transformation doubling that to over 200,000 guests, and doubling our economic impact from over 4 million to over 8 million. So it definitely is going to expand what, what our community is able to experience and the economic development that this building and all the organizations provide. I'd like to thank the members of our community who have come forward to help make the transformation possible, and have already stepped up, many, many donors. And every generation has risen to the occasion to ensure that this building can serve their children, and now it's our turn. Tonight is quite romantic, as this room will return to her original roots, her intention as a space for performance. And then, as our mayor said, I, I know that you all must admit that this room has presented a good bit of dramatics over the years in theater as our city council's chambers. As this official transfer occurs tonight, we would like to present the first piece of theatrical equipment, the ghost light for the new space, the Hippodrome. And bringing forward this, this new light is our technical director, Hannah Funderburke, and our assistant technical director, Ethan Golden. A ghost light is a light that is left burning on stage when the theater is otherwise dark. And it's a global tradition that is thought to have begun around the time Thalian Hall was built. The light serves both the practical purpose of preventing accidents in the dark, as it's dangerous to enter a darkened theater, and a symbolic one, believed to appease the theater's resident spirits. This light that our technical team built is special, topped with an antique lantern that hearkens to the railroad days, when this industry was king of the city, when this building was built. It also includes various City of Wilmington budget and planning books from over the years, interspersed with theatrical scripts that are built into the stem of the light. This will remind us of our roots and special bond and long relationship between our city and the live arts industry, especially within these very walls. And I want to thank the citizens of this city for its vigilant support of Thalian Hall since opening in 1858. Thank you to our city leadership, our city staff, for their vision of entrusting this historic structure to Thalian Hall to serve as a beacon to our region's live arts industry. I am, I have been overwhelmed by your clear understanding of the impact that the arts have on our city as an important pillar for quality of life, an essential tool to educate our future generations, a major driver in workforce training and entrepreneurship for crew and artists, and as an economic powerhouse for our regional economy. Our city gets it, and I want to thank you on behalf of all Wilmingtonans. I would like to invite Thalian Hall Center for the Performing Arts Board of Trustees President Shannon Sandlin to join me in front of the dice, along with you all around this button here, and we will activate the new light.
Are there any items we brought forward by our city attorney, our city manager?
No, sir.
Madam Clerk, Mr. Joyner, Mr. Waddell?
Just quickly to reiterate the comments that you made at the start of the meeting, how, how blessed and honored and I am to, to see the men and women of the Wilmington Fire Department and the, and the display that they put on today, and wish my, well wishes to, to the gentlemen who were, who were harmed, and thank you to those who put themselves in harm's way for us every day.
Thank you. Mr. Barnett?
I agree with Councilmember Waddell. Again, our prayers are out for those firefighters and for the police officers that always keep us safe. I got married in 1989. The guy who was my ring bearer was eight years old, his name was Daniel Watts. Daniel Watts now has done performances on Broadway. He played beside, he played, oh God, I can't even think of the, anyway, he's done acting in Broadway, he's acting on television now with a special show, that he does a number of things. But I shared it with you because his first flip that he did, he did it in Thalian Hall. And I just wanted to connect that connection. And so what makes me excited, and they talked about how the future is here, what makes me excited is that the future is here, you know, and we're, we're in a good place, and it's a great time to be a part of the history. So I'm just excited to be a part of all that Wilmington is going to be doing in the very near future.
Mr. Ravenbarke?
When I first got elected, this was, I've sat in every seat up here except that one. And this is my, tonight is my 532nd meeting in this building as a city councilman. That doesn't count all the other meeting stuff. I did whatever, but Shane, that was a great presentation. This building is real special, front and back. And when I was a little boy, my mother worked for the water department, and it was in the basement, as was the police department. And that ramp that goes out beside Penny's office, that's where the motorcycles and the cars used to go out. And it, this building, planning and zoning used to be in this building. It was a mess before they remodeled the whole thing, but boy, this Thalian Hall, it's a, it is quite a showplace, and I am so excited that Shane and his wonderful group is, is got, is driving this car, because I know it's going to be better than first class. And I can't wait to see the things happen, because we're real proud. Thank you.
Sanders?
Yeah, I wanted to also mention that this has been a really emotional day for all of us, that I'm really proud and honored to be served by the Wilmington Fire Department. And David and I both wished our, our best wishes to those who are injured and their families. We had a great hello today to our new police chief, and so welcome to you and your family. We're so happy to have you here and to be saying goodbye to this building, but we'll be back a lot. So thanks, Shane, for all your wonderful plans for the future and, and for taking such great care of this place.
Spears?
Yeah, just want to say thank you and send heartfelt prayers to the first responders that responded today to the new center drive. Amazing job.
Well, I think that was all that was said, so as Bugs Bunny said, that's all, folks. We stand adjourned.